All right, all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on tonight's agenda is going to be a public hearing for a zoning ordinance amendment to the mixed-use activity center in the off-street parking and loading sections of the township zoning ordinance.
And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Coons.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. I'm only here when the exciting things are on the agenda. Back in February, Township Council reviewed a conceptual multifamily development at the intersection of Water Dam and Galley Road, proposed by Al Nayar, and it brought to light a number of different deficiencies in the township zoning ordinance as it relates with the mixed-use activity center and our overall township ordinances in regard to off-street parking and loading. Staff has prepared a number of amendments to our zoning ordinance that I will go through tonight rather quickly that will address these situations. And the staff wants to make it clear that we think these are issues that need to be addressed regardless as to if Nayar continues to develop this project. We think these are prudent measures that we need to take to get the best possible development here in the township, specifically in the mixed-use activity center district. So these are some things that we would advocate for, again, regardless as to if Nayar would have moved forward on this project. On the screen tonight, I've put together a map that highlights the mixed-use activity center district, and it's comprised of two sub-districts. And the one we're going to focus on tonight is the MA1 sub-district, which is the southwest corner of the township. It's basically McDowell Lane, south on Route 19, all the way to the township borders, all of the MA1 sub-district. And the Al Nayar property that they're looking at is located within that district. The first of the ordinance amendments that I've proposed, or staff has proposed, would be eliminating the maximum number of units per structure for multifamily development just in that one isolated sub-district. Currently, it's at 36 units per structure. Staff is, again, recommending that we fully repeal that requirement. We see this as a change that is necessary to get high-quality multifamily development in that area of the township, and that's the Nayar site is one that is ripe for good, quality multifamily development, and we think that this is a change that is needed to really spur that along and get a good, quality project in there. The second of the two amendments that we're proposing tonight is also within the MA1 sub-district, and that would be reducing the maximum floor area ratio, which is the maximum development potential of a property, from 1 to .85. This is a change that is very similar to the one we made last year in the Town Center in response to the Waters of McMurray project, where we saw that FAR of 1, it was actually developed at .85. I think we saw that as the maximum kind of mass that we would want to see on a project, and so we adjusted the maximum FAR in the Town Center district to .85. Doing that here in the mixed-use activity center district, we feel is a good compromise. Eliminating that maximum 36 units per structure and dropping the FAR down slightly is a good compromise for the developability of that property or in the district. And then the third of the ordinance amendments that we're proposing is eliminating the entire regulation for the entire township, for all zoning districts, that at least 50% of off-street parking for multifamily developments only be covered on three sides. Al Nayar is proposing some covered parking just to help them make their parking on the site work, but in general, this requirement generally tends to lead towards covered parking structures that can become unsightly over time and might not be the best well-thought-out in the overall site design, and we just don't think it's something that is prudent for the township and moving forward into the future. So those are the three ordinance amendments that we're recommending as staff. Planning Commission reviewed our recommendations at their March 10 meeting of this year and did make a recommendation to council that they be approved. I'm happy to answer any questions that council has or any members of the public as we go through this public hearing. Thank you.
Don't leave. First.
My two questions are, one, the off-street parking requirement is exclusive to this mixed-use area, would not be applied to townhouses or some of the other developments?
It would not apply to townhouses, but it is township-wide, but it only applies to multifamily developments, AKA apartments or condos, depending on how the units are treated.
I'm trying to reflect on its interpretation that that would eliminate garages for some of the structures that we currently require garages.
I mean, it would eliminate the requirement for those, if developer wanted to put those in anyways. Obviously, there would be no restriction for them to do that. And I think, especially when it comes to high-class multifamily apartments, there is a desire for some of that. It's just a matter of, do we want to require 50% of it be covered on three sides? And maybe for a smaller project, that would result in a less desirable type of covered parking structure.
But it would not eliminate the requirement to have in-townhouses to have indoor parking. That, it does not affect that. What this eliminates is the kind of structure you see behind Harriet's Meadows.
And then I would simply say that I've not been a fan of Waters and the factor that you're proposing, the .85 on the floor area ratio, I think is still way too high. But it's my opinion.
Understood.
Can't remember who were here when we did the last comprehensive plan in...
2013.
Yeah, I came on in 2018, so after the comp plan, after the zoning ordinance was adopted.
What I wondered is the 36-unit limit that's currently in place in this district. Where did that come from? Is there some...
I can't pinpoint exactly, but I'm sure it was a model ordinance from some other community and...
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out what brought it up to begin with, to make sure that we don't undermine...
It's a great question. It's something we rattled with as staff. You know, based on my experience, I think the intent might have been to eliminate too massive a building on one site, but that could have intentionally created, or maybe unintentionally, like a Barrick-style development, where you've got too many structures that are just kind of strewn throughout a site, or create something akin to like a garden apartment-type development.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that actually, that provision in the ordinance actually even predates...
I believe it did.
...the last comprehensive plan. And what I believe is what Seth alludes to would make sense, that what it drives is garden-style apartments. And there was a period of time when garden-style apartments were pretty much what was being built for multifamily rental properties, but that time has passed.
Certainly. But I do think it was a function of concept of mass of a particular structure or building. Of course, we were limited, we weren't going four stories at that time either.
Any other comments or questions from council? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move the...
Before you close, I just want to make note that our intention is to take, put this on the next agenda so that action on the ordinance is scheduled for the first meeting in May.
Mr. Chairman, I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
In motion, as we made a second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting's closed.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is going to be approval of minutes from the council meeting held in April 18, 2022.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion, second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. The carry is five, nothing. Special reports, we have one report detailing State Fire Commissioner, Fire Department Sergeant, Peter Township Fire Department, Chief.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Peters Township Fire Department was recently recognized by the Office of the State Fire Commissioner for having 100% of our firefighting personnel trained to a nationally-recognized professional qualification standard. The participating department program from the State Fire Commissioner's office is one that departments have an opportunity to participate in and be recognized at a level compared to their peers. This is something that is done with sanctioned professional qualification standards at the national and state level. This is done, or I'm sorry, the purpose is to promote and to recognize organizations such as ourselves that support, promote, and encourage our emergency response personnel to certify within the state certification program administered by the Office of the State Fire Commissioner. There are four levels at which fire departments can apply for recognition. These are based on the percentage of the personnel in the department that are certified to each level. The basic certification is 10% of your personnel are certified. The next is a bronze level, which 50% are certified, silver at 75%, and gold, at which 100% of our personnel are certified. At the time that we made application, Pennsylvania had a total of 2,448 fire departments, according to the Office of the State Fire Commissioner's website. 209 of these departments participate in the recognition program, and only 36 of them were at the gold level. Peters Township Fire Department is now the 37th gold-level participating department. Certifications such as these are important to show compliance with state and national fire service standards and training and response. This certification looks at one of the most important facets of the fire service, and that's training. Our department is recognized in other voluntary state certifications as well, namely the PA Department of Health Prepared for Pediatrics certification at the expert level. We also have a goal to achieve the rescue service recognition program also through the Office of the State Fire Commissioner at some point in time within the next year. I would like to take the opportunity to thank council, our firefighters, our emergency response personnel, and everybody that supports our mission to deliver the highest level of emergency services to the residents, business owners, and all travelers of Peters Township. If council has any questions about this or other service recognitions, I will gladly take those questions.
What do you mean by everybody? 100% certification, is that the firefighter ones?
So, yeah, it's actually firefighter one includes one of them, but any pro-board certification level with the exclusion of hazmat awareness. So hazmat operations is the lowest level on the hazmat side. Firefighter one is the next lowest on the firefighting side. So what the fire service, what the Office of the State Fire Commissioner's goal is that anybody that's going to respond on a fire apparatus have a pro-board certified qual, a pro-board certified level of training. Firefighter one and hazmat operations being the two lowest of that standard.
So everybody that's currently on the roster?
Everybody that's a firefighting personnel, interior firefighter has firefighter.
Okay, so the interior firefighter is one.
Yes. The other level of, yeah, have firefighter one for interior firefighters. All other certified responders have a hazmat operations level pro-board certification.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. Anybody else?
As I look down through here, we are the only one in Washington County? Is that correct?
At the present time, yes. North Trebane was certified at the gold level, but you have to certify every three years. So our next certification is going to be in the year 2025, and our goal is to obviously hold that gold standard as well. If North Trebane's in a law where they're at 75% or they haven't recertified yet, that might be the reason for that, but they were recently certified at the gold level.
Okay, thank you, mate.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, chief. Congratulations. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you. And next item is going to be audience comments, which is an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to provide comments? Seeing none, we move to unfinished business, for which there is none, which takes us to new business. First item is going to be a resolution adopting Peters Township Library strategic plan.
So with financial support from the Peters Township Library Foundation, the Peters Township Public Library has completed its strategic planning process. That process commenced in January. Prokopia, the consulting firm, was employed to steer that process. The strategic planning process involved focus groups and interviews with internal stakeholders such as library board members, employees and council members, as well as external stakeholders such as the Library Foundation, school district, and key community leaders. The community needs assessment and a patron survey was also conducted, and the final deliverable is a high-level work plan designed to support a set of enumerated goals established in the strategic plan. A representative of Prokopia presented that final product to the library board on Tuesday, April 12th. The library board unanimously recommended to council to final approval of the strategic plan document. And tonight, Heather is here to present to council that document. I'm getting there.
It's nice to see everyone again. Thank you so much for being part of this plan. I know that when we last met, we were in the focus group phase, so Laura and I are both here, and Laura will introduce herself in just a second. But what we wanted to do was walk through with you the entire plan, not just for council but for anyone visiting in the audience tonight, to see this important document and how it came to fruition. So for everyone that doesn't know me, I'm Heather Manable. I am Essential Region Director for Prokopia Nonprofit Consulting, and we have been working with Peters Township Public Library since January on this plan, so the timeline was January through April. And before I get into an overview, I just want to give Laura an opportunity to introduce herself.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Laura O'Grady, and I was working with Heather on this plan with Peters Township Public Library. I am a librarian by profession. I was a former director of the Hershey Public Library in Hershey, Pennsylvania, and the Director of Development for the York County Library System. So my library background, paired with some grant writing and strategic planning work I'm doing now, made me a good partner on this project. I'll let Heather explain the project to you guys.
All right, wonderful. So I wanted to take a minute today just to begin with our executive summary. So you have the full document. You've had an opportunity to review it. I understand that you'll have, I believe, the whole next month, they'll come up on your agenda next month. So it's a great opportunity just to give you that overview, to answer some questions. So in terms of about the plan, so this is the library's first strategic plan since being incorporated to the township, which I think is a really significant note to make, and I think that really speaks quite nicely to the leadership that the library's had to this point, that they've been able to operate without a strategic plan. I think even more so to the current leadership in place that made the decision to initiate this process. As I said before, this was a four-month timeline, January through April, and we had, as Paul had mentioned, a steering committee that was led by representatives from the board, council staff, foundation board. So your very own Frank Koser Jr., as you're aware, was a part of that on our steering committees, and that these efforts led to the creation of four strategic goals and a revised mission statement that will lead the library's work over the next five years. Four key themes that came up that I just wanted to highlight for council. One is that the library is in the enviable position of being well-supported financially by the township and a mighty group of individuals who serve on the board of the organization's foundation. So strategic planners who work with nonprofits a lot, that was really exciting, because very rarely do we have someone come to us with a plan who says, yes, we have the funding to meet our budget every single year, and that is very much in due impart to this council, so thank you. I'm sure the library thinks you as well. And the library has the benefit of an exemplary advisory board to support its director. So the bodies of the foundation, the advisory board, have not always worked collaboratively, and that's something that came out of this plan, and they are going to now in the future that is also part of this plan, so Lacy can speak to that in a minute. The layout of the physical space proves a challenge for the library, so it's gorgeous. I walk into the space, I think it's fantastic. The front door is open to this great inviting library, and while the design's lovely, it hasn't proven practical for the organization. So one of the things that they'll be doing as part of this plan is figuring out how to move things around, which sounds like not a lot, but it's a lot when you're working with a collection as massive as this one. And that continued professional development's really important. They're librarians, they're lifelong learners, and they'd like to learn more, and because, like any other industry, this industry continues to change and there's new challenges, COVID being amongst them, and information that that's an important investment for the library to be making, so that's come up in this plan. And then, of course, is a recurring question of how the library will operate in a post-pandemic environment. Again, that's not unusual, that's coming up in most plans that we're working on with organizations at this point. I'm going to turn things over to Laura, who's just going to walk through with you the methodology for this plan.
Thank you. Thank you. So I just want to walk through methodology, as Heather just mentioned. What I think is really unique about what Prokopia does with strategic planning is they really focus on information gathering in a lot of different ways, and then synthesizing that into a report that can be used for long stretches of time and to keep going back to as they plan, as they plan their goals for the months, the quarter, and the year. So we started off with big questions. Big questions were, board and staff were asked to consider the biggest questions facing the library. The goal of the exercise was to identify the problems that they just aren't getting to, and we collected this by survey, and you have the full report, so you can see all of this information that I'm referencing in the appendices of the report. So this one is in Appendix B. The SWOT analysis you might be familiar with if you've ever done a strategic plan before. SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So in this, in this exercise, we utilize this well-understood tool to succinctly articulate the organization's four components of SWOT as identified by the key internal stakeholders. Again, this was collected by survey, and the survey results are in the appendix. In systems analysis, board and staff were asked to consider each system of the library, programs and services, human resources, board, financials, and marketing, and then rate them basically. They checked off a description they believe describes its current performance. So that would be needs development, could be improved, consistently meets expectations, often exceeds expectations, or sets a new standard. This exercise allows multiple stakeholders to quickly diagnose key areas that need attention, and allows us to reprioritize if it's needed. You know, sometimes we go into a plan with a bias or thinking that we know what the real issue's going to be, and then this helps us reprioritize to reflect what the key stakeholders are telling us. Again, this will, you can find this in Appendix D. Mission alignment, Heather mentioned that out of this process, we came out with a new mission statement. Since the library's at this critical juncture after COVID, trying to figure out its next three to five years, we thought it was really important to revisit the mission statement. So board and staff were asked to evaluate the current mission statement and respond to two key questions. List the top three words in our mission statement that are most meaningful to you, and share what the library does best amongst its peers. I know what, you guys know what a mission statement is, so I'm not going to read you that bullet point, but that exercise helped put in perspective areas where the organization's mission statement remained relevant and where the organization may have drifted. And Frank remembers the threads of email conversations about changing this word to that word, and does that make it more succinct? So thank you, Frank, for devoting your time to that exercise. And a community needs assessment, I really spearheaded this part of the plan. I am a librarian and a researcher, and so I really like to dig into some of the data around here. So I looked at census data, I looked at, you know, poverty rates, educational statistics in your area, as well as a lot of statistics that are specific to the library world, how this library is performing compared to other peers in the state of Pennsylvania and across the country, by looking at the service population that you guys are serving, as well as the budget of the library. So I prepared the community needs assessment to objectively assess past, present, and emerging community needs. The information was used to shape various objectives and action steps within the work plans, as well as to affirm work that was already happening in Peters Township Public Library. And we also had focus groups. Prokopia convened four focus groups to discuss responses to all of those aforementioned exercises that I talked about. We had four board members and 14 staff that met to elaborate and provide deeper context to their responses. So we often showed the responses and then got feedback from that focus group and really got to dig into what the context might be from some of those responses. We also conducted focus groups with five community partners, six township council members, six library foundation board members, and interviewed one patron. Additional patron feedback was collected by a questionnaire of five select individuals, and again, you can see the results of this in Appendix G. And I'm going to pass it back to Heather for the goals and objectives.
All right, so it's like the big revealing moment. So we took all of this information and we put this together into goals and objectives. Those were revised by the steering committee, and as Laura alluded, we had some wordsmithing and some changing around, which I have to say that not all steering committees are as engaged as what we encountered here at Peters Township. And I have also to say that this whole experience has been just really a dream. It's been a great community to work with, everyone loves the library, everyone cares about it, and it's just been a collaborative effort. And oftentimes, when I have my weekly meetings with the rest of the leadership at Prokopia, they're jealous that I got this project, and I'm glad I did. So then we took this to the board, and the board approved the goals and objectives. So the revised mission statement is a much simpler, more succinct, and less focused on the direct delivery mechanisms and to the point. So it's Peters Township Public Library empowers individuals to learn, explore, and connect by providing enriching programs, services, and access to information. And the three highlighted words, empowers, learn, and enriching, are the ones that throughout the process, everyone said these words have got to remain in our mission, they are critical to the work that we do. I actually, anecdotally, had at one point proposed a mission statement that did not have one of these words, and that did not go over well, and it was put right back in, and it turned out much better, so thank you. So the four goals and the corresponding objectives, the first goal is to inspire the library's board of directors and management team to lead the organization with a shared vision. So what we're looking at here is you have a great leadership team in place between the foundation board, between the library advisory board. How do we make sure that everyone has the supports that they need to help this library better serve the community or to serve the community as well in perpetuity? The objectives are to define the role of the library board of directors and invest in governance, development, and training. So this is something that came up on the council's focus group call with us of, you know, what is the role of the library board, and so we've gotten that direction, and now they're going to charge with it. Empowering the management team to nurture a safe environment for learning, opportunity, and professional development, to increase transparency by developing and sharing a process for communication within the organization and the board and council, so to make sure everyone knows what's going on, all the key things. And this goes back to that report that you often get from the library to make sure it's the key metrics that you should be seeing. And to work with the library foundation board to establish processes for how to receive financial and volunteer support and furtherance of the library's missions, so just better synergy between the foundation, which is the most significant resource for the library, to make sure that what they're offering is in alignment with the plan. And then to solidify internal operating and management policies and procedures. Our second goal is to prevail as the gateway of knowledge and information, offering programs and services that meet the needs of a 21st-century citizenry. So to improve the financial, or to improve the capacity of the library's technology and digital resources in the 21st century, we've got to be thinking about tech, grow outreach, especially to groups who face barriers to access, i.e. the aging community, homebound residents, new residents, itinerary communities, et cetera, to provide programs and services to meet the changing needs of the community, and then to strengthen marketing and communication strategies to maximize opportunities for sharing information in a cohesive, strategic manner that improves patron experience. You guys are doing a lot of great stuff, so let's make sure everyone in the community knows what they're doing. And then to strengthen partnerships with the community organization, or strengthen partnerships with community organizations, township departments, and educators, and to create new pathways for outreach in a landscape reshaped by COVID. So to remain that critical resource for educators, to reach more adults in the community and feature professional resources through partnership with the Peters Township Chamber of Commerce, to develop synergy with the recreation center by establishing what differentiates the two departments in their service to their community, and to seek new community partnerships to broaden the network of library services. And the fourth is to adapt the library's physical space to meet the organization's evolving needs. And so the objectives that correspond with this are to identify space needs for each department based on equipment, audience, staff, capacity, and accessibility, and to create a revised layout for the building that's informed by a physical space assessment. So we're not going to just have librarians going in there and moving stacks around and putting piles of books places to really make sure that it's impactful and it makes sense. And then the last note before I have Lacy come up and share just a few highlights from the action plan, I guess I have a few more slides here, but the strategy, so based on focus groups and conversations with library stakeholders, it became apparent that was necessary to weave the following four strategies into the aforementioned goals. So each is considered equal in importance, and none should be prioritized specifically over another. How each strategy is specifically brought to light can be seen in the work plans. So the four strategies that we saw that are woven throughout this plan are leadership and staff development, access, partnerships, and then marketing and communications. And this just simply shows you where they show up and in which goals. So we took all of this work, right, so now we have these goals, we have these objectives, we have these strategies that correspond with them, and we worked on math lifts and work plans. So we created plan templates for each of the four goals, or fill-in-the-blank worksheets, and then we worked with the library board, with the staff, and we did fill-in-the-blank exercises to come up with and generate ideas for how this would come into an action plan. Lacy and Iliana at that point really led the charge in forming the action plan, and so Lacy will come up, it's you, for the work plan highlights.
Okay, so like Heather mentioned, we needed to come up with specific actions for near-term, midterm, and far-term for how are we going to accomplish all of these goals and objectives? So Iliana and I went through and just picked out some highlights of things that we're excited for. So under goal one, for, you know, things involving the library's board and the management team, we want to develop a new board member orientation for when people are onboarding just to learn about the library, their responsibilities and their role as a board member. Create a structured professional development plan for all departments in the library to assist with scheduling and budgeting needs. Who are we sending to training? Who are we sending to conferences? How does that all work? How does that all work? Collaborate with the foundation on support for matching grants and opportunities specific to 501(c)(3) recipients. That's what the foundation is there for, to assist us with, you know, financial needs outside of our generous operating budget from the township every year. And so we want to have a better plan with them of how can we get grants or things that maybe only the foundation could get instead of the township. Under Goal Two, which is all about our programs and services, we'd like to utilize the monthly list of new residents to the township to provide information about the library, maybe including designing a welcome mailer to those new residents and let them know about our programs and services. We'd like to design some volunteer activities and programs specific to library patrons with developmental disabilities. We felt that that's a community that we're not really reaching right now with our current programs. We'd like to create a survey to reassess teen and tween programming in light of physical school district changes, high school moving, middle school. You know, those students aren't able to walk to the library anymore after school, and so we've, we've really seen a difference in our teen programming that we'd like to address. And we'd like to offer training and develop smart outcomes for each department within the library to identify what data needs to be tracked and how to begin measuring the outcomes, so that we're not just providing the same programs and services over and over, because it's what we've always done, but it's really a more outcomes-based approach. Goal Three, which is all about partnerships, we'd like to develop a process to have every child in the school district get signed up for a library card, and our youth services department already has the gears turning on how that might work, partnering with the school district. Establish a historical collective centered in the PTPL archives, partnering with other local history institutions, which obviously Margaret Deitzler is leading the charge on that one. And we'd like to partner with the rec. department employees to create and install a permanent story walk along a trail in Peters Township, which I've spoken to Michelle about. And then lastly, under Goal Four, for our space planning, is to secure funds, ideally grant funding, to conduct a space assessment with the support of a third-party expert. So within the existing footprint of the library, what can we do to make it more flexible for staff, for our programs, for patrons, collections, make it more accessible? That's it. And obviously, there's a lot more, the full work plan was in the, in the packet that you guys received, but we just wanted to hit some highlights. Any questions?
I'd say the final product here turned out very well. I guess I didn't realize that there was an issue with the space. It looks great, but it doesn't work for you guys.
Well, we're, I think part of the problem is that, you know, we're a growing staff, and we're changing how we do some programs and things, and so it just, that comes with some space.
I think flexibility is key for libraries in 2022. You know, after COVID, we're really reimagining how libraries function, and so having the ability to move a stack of books and have not everything so fixed is really key for the next few years.
Yeah, I appreciate you, council, having the opportunity to serve as, I guess, a focus group for this process as well. It opened my eyes to a lot of things. I'm definitely, I underutilized the library. It's changed my outlook on it. Any else? Council, any questions?
No, I think you definitely outlined to the, in our focus group, we really wanted to bring those teens and tweens back to the library. I didn't even think about the school moving and how they walked over there and used it all the time, but if you put a Starbucks in there, they'd be there. Great job, we really appreciate all you've done.
Mr. Chairman, it'll be my pleasure to move to approve Resolution Number 04-0322, adopting Peters Township Library Strategic Plan.
Second.
Motion, second on the table, any other comments?
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hosed. Okay, that's motion. There's a resolution. I'll come up. Also, yes, okay. Tell you not to.
Nope, we'll hang out.
Next item is going to be a resolution, and then Peters Township Library Policy and Procedure.
So we decided to do our yearly policy review a little bit early this spring, instead of waiting till the summer. We had a couple items come up. You know, with a brand-new policy manual like we created last year, we knew that there would probably be some small changes, tweaks, logistical things that we would need to fix. So one thing that came up, kind of post-COVID, we started having a lot more requests for test proctoring, and so we needed to create a brand-new policy for that to just kind of set some guidelines for both library staff and for people who were requesting the proctoring. So that was added in. There were a couple small changes to some other policies, and then the other kind of larger change was under our challenged materials policy. So if, you know, it's kind of a national trend right now that people are asking librarians, teachers, whoever, to reconsider books or items that are in their classroom, in their school library, their public library. And so we wanted to get ahead of that a little bit, and the policy that we had proposed last year just said that members of the public could submit a written complaint to the director, and it would be reviewed. But we wanted to make sure that we had a way to collect more standardized information, specifically what part of the book or the item material did you take issue with? Do you know how our collection development policy works? What are your suggestions for how we should reconsider it? Should it be taken out of the collection? Should it be moved somewhere else within the library? So we worked, you know, looked at the American Library Association website and plenty of other library websites to develop a form that would take care of that. So if anybody would like to challenge a material that's within the library, they have a nice form that they can fill out now.
Is this common? Do you have a lot of these?
We don't. We want to get ahead of it. Just in case.
I can tell you this, when, when there was the transition from being standalone to being a department, one of the concerns that was expressed by the library board and the librarian at the time was, we don't want the manager picking the books in the library. The manager has no desire to pick the books in the library. But, but more importantly with this, this proposal is, it puts the library board where it should be, as the final decision-making in this, as opposed to it, you know, these questions coming to council for decisions about, about books in the library, I think the library board is the appropriate final word.
Oh, right. So that was the other thing that we added to the policy, was that the library board would be the final decision-maker. If somebody didn't agree with my decision or the staff's decision, they could appeal to the library board. I don't believe that was in the policy when we created it last year. And then everything else was just some small, you know, logistical changes that I had listed in.
We've not had requests to remove some of the...
Not yet.
I'll call them historic classics that we were all challenged to read when we were in high school or elementary school.
No. And of course, that's something that if we were to ever get a request, we take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We need a motion.
Is this also Resolution 04-0322?
It should be 04.
04. Yes. All right, someone else make the motion, I don't want to hog it.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 040422, amending the Peters Township Library Policy and Procedure Manual.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Those of you who are traveling, have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Next item is going to be approval of Brookwood Place Amendment Number Five.
So this is a simple subdivision, what it's doing in this plan, these buildings are under construction, they now know where the party walls are, and it's establishing the lots based upon the actual construction of the building. You've done this four times before, and so I think, is this the last one in this plan?
No, no. There'll be a few more.
Okay.
Paul, you go ahead. What's that? There's, there's five of us here tonight, there's five things on the agenda, so, all right, make the motion.
So I'll make a motion here, such a council group, Brookwood Place Amendment Number Five, as shown and drawn and prepared by Spurgd Land Surveying, dated March 7, 2022, for the Donnel Land Partners LLC.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hosed.
I think we just lost the rest of our audience, didn't we?
Very much.
Any carries five, nothing. Item D will be approval of the quarter basis of the Benicia Point 2022 final plan.
This is, in essence, the same thing. There are five townhouses that will be built, and Benicia Point is the last of those, and this is creating those lots to be able to accommodate those townhouses.
And that's been a long time coming.
It's been a while, yes.
2007, I think, we started.
All right, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, accrual for according purpose to Benicia Point 2022, final plan as shown on the drawings prepared by Colbrook Professional Services, dated March 3, 2022, for Benicia Point Homers Association, Inc.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hosed. Carries five, nothing. Last item would be business would be award of a contract for purchase and installation of a playground in Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
So the, you know, the purchase of playgrounds differ from the purchase of equipment and vehicles and commodities, in that the playground design is a creative process. A purchasing procedure for playgrounds that's worked well for the township in the past is, in essence, to have a design competition amongst leading playground providers whose products are available through Co-Stars, the Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program. A budget was established, and in this case, that budget is $235,000. Each playground provider submitted one or more playground designs that could be built within that budget and within the confines of the allotted space. These submittals were reviewed by the township staff, as well as the Peters Township Park and Recreation Board. On March 17, 2022, the Park and Recreation Board reviewed the playground designs. The board's first choice was a design by General Recreation Incorporated. The playground design did not take into consideration the slope that exists on this playground area, and therefore could not be constructed in the space provided. The Park and Recreation Board's second choice was the design you see here by Burke. The board favored this submittal because of the playground is the sage, the shade structures, and there's musical components in it. And I think part of that is that this playground would be different than other playground structures we have in other parks. So it's going to be my recommendation, the Peters Township Council Award, I contract the Snyder Recreation under Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program for $235,000.
Paul, where exactly up there in the park is this playground supposed to be?
It is on the end of the great lawn.
Like away from where the pavilions are on the other end?
Well, it's not the pavilion that we were there, it's on the other end. It's back down towards where the, the restroom is up there.
So like up on the bend, like where you come past where the maintenance facility is on that side?
Yes, but elevated up towards where the...
Because I'm just trying to, trying to envision where this hill is.
Oh, no, what it is, is it's hard to see here.
Because I see the hills in the middle, right?
Yeah, there, there is a sloped area in the middle of this thing, and it's that.
And what, this is that same kind of material we have up at the ones in Peterswood with that rubberish stuff underneath?
Right, yes. Yes, but see, if you look here, this ramp actually sits on the, there's a slope right here. This ramp sits on the top of the slope, and this is actually, this, all of this is at a lower level.
So is this exactly what it will look like, this color?
No, the colors haven't been chosen.
Okay. Get those little psychedelic in that.
I mean, I think the newer playgrounds in Peterswood Park look very nice.
Yes.
That red, white, and white.
I've learned a long time ago not to pick colors personally.
Is there a reason why we say we're picking a design by Burke, in that we're taking action to award it to Snyder Recreation?
Burke is the manufacturer of the playground equipment, Snyder is the representative who you're actually making a contract with.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we award a contract to Snyder Recreation under Co-Stars, the California Cooperative Purchasing Program for $235,000. One second.
Okay, motion, second, all, or any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hosed. Carries five, nothing. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills, I find them to be in order, I move to be approved and submitted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hosed. Showing no correspondence. Anybody have any discussion items on the reports? Seeing none, we'll move into, it's like there's nothing for next, for missing names.
Oh, yes, there is. One, I wanted to just, and I know council's aware of these, but for the purposes of the meeting, you know, the police department have had two recent cases where I think they've gone above and beyond, and quite frankly, they're the kind of cases that local police departments don't normally take on. There's, was a very serious child pornography case, the victims of that were actually township residents, the perpetrators were located well outside this area, Florida, North Dakota. And to their credit, and because of the resources and people that you have in your department right now, they were able to work with federal authorities, and the individual that, that is in North Dakota will be, will be extradited back to Western Pennsylvania to face charges here in addition to federal charges. And again, your police department has the capacity to do that, and you don't see that in other local departments. These kind of things would be pushed off to the state police or to federal authorities. The other one was the case that, that the chief made you aware of with the ATM thefts. You know, that whole case hinged upon one of our police officers who took it upon himself when he viewed the video of the perpetrator taking money out of a ATM, going back and going through the garbage can and pulling out all the slips that were in there, and the person threw in slips from other ATMs that he had hit previously. So where they had to work that case beyond that, it was somebody doing the kind of due diligence that you would hope that your police department would do, and that's what the expectation is over in that police department right now. And I think the chief and the, and the officers are to be commended for their good work in this regard. The other thing is, just so you know, we got noticed today, this is Saratoga, this area behind here where this roadway has been cut in, and this, this slide is being repaired, work's going to begin on that again next week, so hopefully, within the next month or so, they'll have that complete and restore those, those lawns. I did want to, and I, again, I realize council knows this, but just for, for the sake of the record, the zoning hearing board did issue a decision in the, in the zoning appeal from St. Clair Hospital, the zoning hearing board ruled in favor of the township. The hospital has indicated that they intend to appeal, but we have yet to see that appeal. And then finally, we have two people retiring out of the public works department. One is John Augustinella, he's been an employee here for 43 years. In fact, John probably has the distinction of the only employee who was still an employed who was hired by Jim Ross, the manager prior to Michael Silvestri. And then in addition to that, Tom Shear will be retiring, he'll have spent 37 years here. So when these two people walk out the door, you know, 80, 80 years of, of internal history is, is going to walk out with, and they both have been good employees, and, and we intend to celebrate their service to the township. So that's all I have.
Anybody have anything to put on the next agenda? Senator Jeremy, the executive?
Yes, we do.